Join me in prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings of life that you've given us. Father, we thank you for the state and the nation that we are in. Father, we thank you for these folks that are gathered here today. Pray that you'd be with us in court, that we would do your will in the things that we do for the county. Father, we thank you for, again, all the many blessings that you've given us. Father, we thank you, or I thank you, for eternal life through Jesus Christ. Be with us in all that we do. Give us travel as mercy as we leave here. And again, pray that we do the best thing that we can for the county. These things we ask in praises we give in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please proceed. In case I didn't mention it, I'm Commissioner Wiley. Judge Jackson is off today, doing whatever his judges do when they're off. And I'm going to be Judge Pro Tim today. I need a motion that that takes place.
I'll make a motion for Commissioner Wiley to be Judge Pro Tim for reading today.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, this is a wonderful day. The judge is gone and Commissioner Fahl can't talk.
It may be a quick meeting.
It may be a quick meeting, if possible. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir, no.
Also, Commissioner Perdola, are you here? Commissioner Perdola was to call in. He's unable to be here in person today. I suppose we can go forward for the moment. Item number three on the agenda, or number four, certificates of completion and awards. And there are three here. Person VUE certified test administrator. This certifies that Nikki Stor has successfully completed the requirements needed to become a person VUE certified test administrator on October the 4th, 2021. I don't know what that means, but...
That's a testing center.
Dynamite. We have the same thing again. Person VUE certified test administrator. This certifies that Lisa McCall has successfully completed the requirements needed to become a person VUE certified test administrator on October the 4th, 2021. Congratulations to her. And certificate of achievement. This is to certify that Candace Nicole Mary has completed the course Explore and Discover the Nature-Based Spaces and Activities at Your Library, and that was completed on September the 20th. Congratulations to her as well.
I have my notes.
You have yours?
I have my notes.
You have your...
I just wanted to recognize my staff.
Please.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Commissioner Martin. And this morning, with my staff in the back, if y'all stand up before the moment, stand up, be recognized. This is staff from Precinct 1. I just wanted to thank them for everything they do. They've made a lot of inroads. We've made a lot of changes, and they've been adapting to that. Also, they have fully committed to participating in the vaccine clinics as well as food bank distributions. And again, I'd just like to thank y'all this morning for the wonderful job that y'all have done for me in these past nine months.
Your honor, ladies and gentlemen. Now y'all go to work. Now get out of here. Extension activity report.
I have handed those out.
You've handed those out?
Yes, yes.
Item number six. Larry Wiley, Commissioner Precinct 4, Jim Stewart, County Sheriff. Discuss and take action on transferring unused fiscal 2020-2021 funds from the sheriff's office and jail to 2021-22 budget. Also remain, are transferring equipment auction to the sheriff's office budget. I understand that there was no money remaining from...
That is correct. From fiscal year 2021, in the... So the sheriff is over two budgets, one for the county jail side and one for the sheriff's department budget. We have them separated, but he is responsible for both combined. So whereas he was over on the sheriff's, sheriff's department budget, he came in under on the jail side, but it washed and balanced almost within $100.
All right. And then the second part was transferring of funds for equipment auction.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that is, from last year, is a no.
That last year's revenue has already been reseeded into last year's fiscal year. Any future ones? As I mentioned, that last court first statute, it must be deposited into the general fund. So if in the future, the court wants to decide to allow the sheriff to use any funds, you would have to agree to increase the sheriff's budget and increase the revenue in the general fund to then make a budget amendment increasing his budget.
So if we did that, we would do this through court?
Through court, correct.
Do you want to address any of that, Sheriff? You'll have to do it to me right now. Okay. Item number seven. Richard L. Jackson, County Judge. Mario Bledo, San Antonio Food Bank. Presentation of certificates of application, appreciation, sorry, to outside volunteers for food distribution during the pandemic. Yes, sir?
Good to have you here.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good morning to all of you, Commissioners Court, County staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name for the record is Mario Bledo Jr., Chief of Government and Public Affairs at the San Antonio Food Bank. And on behalf of Eric Cooper, our President, CEO, our Board, our staff, our organization, thank you for the leadership that y'all provide to this great county. With me today is Tabitha Bars. I want to recognize her. She new hire at the food bank, comes from Pleasanton, and she's working with me in the government relations shop at the San Antonio Food Bank. For this item, I briefly just wanted to say some comments. You know, pre-pandemic, the San Antonio Food Bank was assisting nearly 58,000 individuals in terms of emergency food assistance. And once the pandemic hit last year, March of last year, that number skyrocketed to around 120,000 that we were serving in any given week because of the economic downturn, the pandemic itself, folks losing their jobs and needing assistance from the food bank. Now, there's 200 food banks across the country, all part of Feeding America, and in our great state, San Antonio Food Bank is one of 21, so we're part of Feeding Texas, our state association. And that's how the country's safety net is set up, if you look at it that way. All 254 counties are covered by a food bank service territory. And we, historically speaking, for 40 years have been covering 16 counties in southwest Texas. I do want to note, we just took on an additional 13 counties to help out the San Angelo Food Bank. So we are now sending staff and trucks and resources out that way. But when you go back 18 months ago or so, when the pandemic hit, there was a lot of unknown, uncertainty, folks calling out, reaching out for help. And in a couple of our counties down south, and specifically here in Wilson, local government stepped up. Now, federal, state, local government was coming to our aid, but in places like this, Judge Jackson, City of Florisville, I do want to recognize them, stepped up in a great way, in a big way, and offered to help us host large mega distributions to feed the folks here in this county that were struggling to put food on the table. So without local government, without Wilson County, we wouldn't have been able to do or conduct our food distributions and get resources out to families. Now, we partner up with about 530 pre-pandemic non-partner organizations in order to get our food and resources out. But once the pandemic hit, that census, our partner census number drastically dropped. But I do want to recognize partners in Wilson County in places like Poe and Stockdale and Sutherland Springs and Florisville and Laverne, because without those folks, the food bank, we couldn't do what we do. And without volunteers, we would be stuck. We couldn't execute. We have about 250 staff or so, but for 16 counties and now an additional 13, there's no way we can do it. So a special recognition to not only Judge Jackson and Commissioners Court, Commissioner Fahl, Commissioner Martin, but to Genevieve Martinez here in the back of the courtroom for stepping up in a big way. Without Genevieve, I don't know if we would have been able to execute for the county's distributions. City was hosting off of 97 at the Civic Center, but when it came to the county hosting, Genevieve was the conduit. Genevieve was the one that was coordinating work in the schedule, coordinating with the food bank, coordinating with county departments and staff. So many folks from the county came out to help. Commissioner Martin, your crew was out there. Commissioner Fahl, you were out there. Resources when it comes to the show bar, when it comes to forklifts, when it comes to traffic control. And Maggie's here, the volunteer fire department. I want to recognize them for their great help. And Izzy and so many, so many others. I mean, before the pandemic, we had relationships, we had communication lines open. And I knew Genevieve before the pandemic, but now I know her in a bigger, better way. I know what she stands for and what she can do. I know what this county stands for and what it can do. We don't know what's going to happen next, you know? We've been stretched thin, the country's safety net, but we're still intact, and we're still intact because of counties and local government like Wilson County. So on behalf of the San Antonio Food Bank, thank you very much. And Commissioner Martin, I know you have some certificates today to recognize both.
Yes, so we had, we had a lot of county employees that volunteered to work for this, but we also had some non-county employees.
Yes.
And so I know a lot of you are here today, so I'm going to, I'll stand up in a second. When I call your name, come get your certificate. But again, on behalf of the court, I'd like to thank each and every one of you personally who came out and volunteered and gave up your time.
Sharon Stewart and that great group is in that back.
Okay.
They're a big part of this.
And I'll tell you what, I'll call the names that are on here so that we have them all, and I'll just give you this file because they'll go to your people. So it's Jim Dung. Jim, is it Red or Kid?
Kid.
Kid, okay. All this fancy script writing. Rosa Linda Galindo, Kathy McWhorter, Barbara Ristau, Jackie Marion, Deborah Glenn, and Sharon Stewart. Thank y'all very much.
So some of our other volunteers are DB Rios. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Justin Gray.
He's not here, sir.
Here, I'll sit right here. Jonathan Moreno.
Not here either.
Is he more? I don't know who this guy is. Roland Wynden.
Thank you very much. In the closing, you know, without faith, you can't get things done. And Sharon Stewart and her group was there each and every time, giving us that prayer, giving us that hope, keeping us together. And again, just thank you to Wilson County. Thank you to Judge Jackson for his leadership and for the court.
Yeah, lady back there did it all. Thank you, Genevieve. Good presentation, sir. Yeah, the judge told me to make certain that Genevieve got her due attention because sometimes he looks pretty good and it's always a customer. Item number eight. Richard L. Jackson, County Judge, Nikki Stor, Library Director, discuss, hey, discuss and take action on the new lease for the property where Jan Livingston? No, I'm sorry, how do you pronounce that? How do you pronounce that?
Yelvington.
Yelvington?
Yelvington.
Yelvington. I'll get to you later. Macalum Public Library resides.
Okay. Bye, Maria. Thank you. The building and property for which the Laverne Library is at is not owned by the county. We're leasing that property, and the owners of the property would like to raise our rent from $500 a month to $750 a month. So we're here to get the approval that it's okay for them to raise our rent.
Do we have a new lease agreement?
Yes.
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 Has that been provided? We need to provide that to the...
Yes, let's give it to...
I prepared the first one, so if they use that first one, at $500, that's a lot in one year, isn't it?
Well, $250.
They're raising it to $750 a month.
Yeah, right. And they're changing it to 800 a month.
No, it started at 500, and now it's up to 750 is what they're asking.
Just for the record, I did budget the 750 a month because I knew that this was coming. And so Nikki forwarded me the agreement. The judge and I agreed that it just needed to be modified with the start and ending, changing the term date, because if, once the court approves the 750, then he can sign the agreement.
Nikki, are y'all getting anything for the additional money or not?
The additional money, I believe, was, no, we're not, because the 500, we took over the whole building. We were at like 250 when we very first started the agreement because they wanted a third of the building, and the library took up two-thirds. And then they restructured the Wilson County news and removed everybody from the Laverne news, and then they went up to 500. So now, because of, I'm told because of the property values going up, they're asking for a larger rent.
Which is still very inexpensive.
Are they being responsive when there's a problem that they're responsible for?
So far, so, so good. We do have problems with the roof, but it's a metal building with a flat roof that the water has to go somewhere, so instead of running off the roof, the water runs down. But we're working on getting that fixed.
And how many years is this lease order agreed?
One year, I believe. And then if all parties are happy with it, it can renew or like a lump-to-lump agreement.
Commissioner Perdola, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. You're awfully quiet. All right.
The judge spoke to me about this, and he recommended that we up the lease to 250 because, I mean, rate it to 750 because there's nowhere else for us to go with it.
All right. Then I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new lease for the property where the Jan Yelvington Colton Library resides.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Perdola, second the motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? It passes. Part B is update Commissioners Court on the testing center within the San Ford Junior Public Library.
When the library moved to its new location, I heard a little rumor that there, in 2016 we moved, I heard a little rumor that there was no testing service for GED within Wilson County. So before I started my search looking for a way to turn the library into a testing center when the library was not open, I contacted all the school systems in Wilson County. Nobody had a testing center that would help kids who want to do the GED. So it took me about two years before we could actually get people certified. There were special requirements. If you've been into the new library from the computer lab, there's this big bank of windows that open into the public floor of the library. That was a big issue with this company that we chose, this Pearson View, because they're a third-party company. So people like Microsoft, Cisco, even the GED companies give this third-party company their tests, and we have to observe each one of those testing rules. And one of the rules was with that big open panel of windows. They don't like you to be able to look out. We can't be open for a public library where people can come and go. So the only way we could help these people who need the GED was to do it on a day that the library's closed. So the library closes at 12 on Saturday and reopens as a testing center from 1 until 7:00. And we can only use five of the 10 computers because of restrictions. You can only be so far apart. You can't look at anybody else's screen. So it took us two years to get the testing just right, and you had to have a special server that was secured, and that had to go through John's office. So I'm happy to say that this is our, whereas we started in March of 2019, and from March until December, we had 25 tests. And of this, we were able to accommodate one GED test and 12 teacher certifications tests. Now, I just started the certification. It was left up to the staff to do it, and I sat through four days of one-hour trainings to get the certification. And by the end of the test, I felt like my ears, my brain was leaking out the ears because of so many minute little questions. So from January to September of this year, with just doing two Saturdays a month, we've been able to accommodate 103 exams. Of that, 16 have been for GED, 52 have been for teacher certification, 16 have been for the Texas Department of Insurance, and we've had two medical coding tests. So I thought that was interesting that you guys might like to know. There've been some wonderful success stories. We have people as far as Corpus Christi coming to take these tests. From what I've heard from the staff, since this is just my first year interacting with them, there was a gentleman who came all the way from Corpus Christi to take the five individual GED tests. He brought his whole family. He was a long-haul trucker, said they would come for the weekend. They couldn't come in the testing center, but they would go shop around Florisville and see what was to do around the area. It took him, but five, it took him about 10 weeks to get the certification for his GED, and he's now opening his own long-haul trucking service. So it's not just the GED, which when I started this, I envisioned just to be helping people with the GED. We bought the big package, so we can do the fireman's certifications, we can do the teacher certifications. So I just wanted to let you know that the service is out there for not just Wilson County, that they've been as far away as Beville and Corpus Christi, because that's the time of testing that's available to them.
Thank you very much.
That is wonderful.
That's wonderful. You've done some great things with that library in your tenure.
We're not done yet.
That's all right. Don't leave anytime soon.
And she put on a great fundraiser for Stockdale, too.
Yes, the Stockdale was, Casino Night was able to raise just under $15,000 for the building.
That's super. Good job. All right, moving forward. Item number nine. Richard L. Jackson, County Judge. Discuss and take action on repairing roof at Wilson County Tax Office.
Commissioners, so we received a couple of different proposals, and I think Commissioner Martin's been more involved in it in terms of the type of roofing and the two contractors and the two bids that we received. I brought the proposal from Embry Roofing Company to replace the roof at the tax office. It is in dire need. I know this project, we've been working on this for various, June, I think. And so with the recent rain that we had earlier last week, it's getting worse. So the question is, we have money budgeted in building repairs and maintenance enough for the Embry Roofing proposal at $40,890. Commissioner Martin did some research on a different type of roof, and if he wants to speak to that, he can. That proposal well exceeds what we have budgeted. So if that is the route that the court wants to take, we would have to take separate action to determine where we were going to get the money from, since that part's not budgeted, so.
Yeah, I'll just briefly, we looked at the option of putting a metal roof on there in the past, and it's been, I guess, not as much of an increase over a conventional roofing system. And with COVID and the prices of metal right now, it's gone up significantly, so it was right around $100,000, so.
That's a big change.
Yeah, it is. It used to only be like a 10% or 15% premium, but you had a longer warranty and a better roof life, so the economics were overwhelmingly in favor of doing that kind of thing. But like I said, unfortunately, in this case, with the changes in prices and availability, you know, it's just gotten out of hand, so.
I know a couple of the questions that Judge Jackson had, one of them was, what is the warranty for the Embry Roofing? They do have a 10-year transferable labor guarantee and includes, Paul, do you remember the warranty for the life? Is it just the 10 years? It is, no, it's 20 years, okay. 20 years, and Commissioner Fahl, when he could talk, spoke with Embry Roofing, and they did confirm that by replacing the roof, it would correct the problems that Don is having over in the tax office. So that's the, that's the main concern right now, so.
I know the judge was leaning in that direction also, right?
Well, and just be aware, probably there might be some interior repairs that need to be done once we get the roof fixed.
Right. I know she was mentioning that the concrete, there are some areas of cinder or whatever that are deteriorating, so we'll be fine more.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what the turnaround time is for it. There may, I don't know if they're going to have to be relocated or...
No, they should be able to make those repairs while they're there. The other issue is lead time on the material. So once we give them a go-ahead, we'll have to get, we'll have to get that information. It could be 30 or 60 or 90 days out before they can even get the material, based on the conversations I've recently had with, with others regarding availability of roofing materials.
Any more discussion on the roof? Do I hear a motion to use Embry Roofing to repair the roof? Maybe Commissioner Fahl may have a silent motion.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's an aye. All right, approved.
There is, Commissioner Fahl is asking, what about the treasurer's office, because they are having the similar issues. We did receive a quote back in June. I've not received an updated quote. That is another one that would need to be done. So I would recommend maybe once this one's done, maybe at the next court, we bring back the updated estimate. We need to find out if it's going to, I'm assuming it'll change, and that way we can more start that second project.
Yeah, I think there's some different issues with that treasury office roof than there is in the tax office. there is in the tax office, in the standpoint of gutters are not functioning, and it appears at all the roofs are at the edges. So we need to take a closer look at that.
All right, so that's something for future consideration.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to item number 10. Gary Martin, Commissioner Precinct One, discuss and possible action on an interlocal agreement with Abiscosa County Board Road Maintenance and Repair. Commissioner?
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie in Abiscosa County contacted me because he's going to be chip sealing Palmer Road, which he's got like three miles in Abiscosa County, and we have about a quarter mile in my precinct. Unfortunately, he did not get me the agreement for this court, so basically, he's going to chip seal it. I will reimburse him out of my funds for material costs is the gist of it, but as soon as... So I guess we'll have to wait till next court, and we'll hopefully get that agreement that the county attorney can get. So right now, it's just an information. We can't take any action because I don't have the agreement.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Item number 11. Leanne Hochshak, FNC, A Utility Permit Number 659, Sutherland Springs Water System, Precinct Three, Fourth Street, Sutherland Springs, Review and Approve.
I make a motion that we approve permit number 659, the Sutherland Springs Water Supply Company.
We have a motion from Commissioner Perdola. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's approved.
As Judge Protean, we'll just change it from the judge's name to the prosecutor.
All right, now. Okay, moving on. B Nonstandard Flat Variances. Number one, 143 Oak Park Road, Precinct Three, McKnight, discuss and take action.
I have not seen that, so somebody will have to tell me what that's about.
Ms. Hochshak's going to do that right now.
Yeah, I will. Text you a picture here right quick.
She's going to text you a picture.
Okay.
What you have, as I look at it, is there are three parcels. One is two acres, one's 1.33, and another one is two. The gentleman came to the development committee meeting Thursday, and what he is wanting to do, he owns all of this, all three parcels, he is wanting to convey the two acres in the back to a gentleman. In order to do that, he needs to provide a 40%...
Forty foot.
Forty foot, because ingress and egress easement.
Yes, and this was given a favorable recommendation by the committee contingent upon the egress, egress easement be provided and conveyed in perpetuity with the deed.
So that will be a prime easement?
Correct. Yes.
And 40 foot? 40 foot will be wide enough?
Correct, and I just texted you the picture, so you should have it.
Got it. Well, I'll make the motion that we approve that flat variance.
We have a motion. Go ahead, sir.
Motion on 143 Oak Park Road, to accept that.
We have a motion for Commissioner Perdola. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Martin, the second. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Scary, okay. Number two. You can read that signature. Okay, item two is 138 Blackjack Road, Precinct Three, Johansson, discuss and take action. Leanne's about to text you a picture of this also, Commissioner Perdola.
Thank you. I know that you don't have some recent bucks of property down at Blackjack Road and familiar with property, but I don't know what he's wanting to do here with it.
He's...
Okay, so this is 3.35 acres that he owns at 138 Blackjack Road. He wants to split it into two lots. One will be 1.67, and the other will be 1.68. There's no structures on either tract that's being created. He met all the other requirements, and the committee gave it a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the flat variance on 138 Blackjack Road.
We have a motion for Commissioner Perdola, and a second. That'd be Commissioner File made a silent second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay.
Okay, on this one, Ms. Alderman owns 9.36 acres located at 616 County Road 427, and they're wanting, or she's wanting to sell 1.65 acres out of that. She's selling it to someone. They're purchasing it so they can expand for future growth, expand their property.
And he did get a favorable approval.
And met all the requirements, and was given a favorable recommendation by the committee.
I make a motion, we approve it. I can't do that, I'm a judge today. Shut up.
I'll make a motion to approve the flat variance for 616 County Road 427.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Perdola, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Item number four, 136 Wood Valley Drive, Precinct Four, Hayley, discuss and take action.
Okay, Commissioner, I texted you a picture of that one. Okay, and this one, the property owner owns 8.24 acres located at 136 Wood Valley Drive, and they originally had gotten approval on different acreages, but, and that was prior to them having it surveyed. They then had it surveyed, the land was discovered, and so they are splitting that tract of land as it's shown on the survey before you. They met all the requirements and was given a favorable recommendation by the committee.
Do I have a motion to approve 136 Wood Valley Drive?
I'll make a motion to approve the block center plat for 136 Wood Valley Drive.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, the second, by Commissioner Perdola. All in favor?
Aye.
Item five is 5283 FM 539, Precinct Four, Spalding, discuss and take action.
Okay, and this one's pretty cut and dry, because Spalding owns 18.020 acres at 5283 FM 539, and it's known to sell 1.88 acres out of it. All the requirements have been met, and the committee gave it a favorable recommendation.
Okay, I hear a motion for approval.
I make a motion, yeah.
Approved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Perdola.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Leanne, for all of your help in that.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Item number 12. Edwin Baker, Health and Safety and Public Safety. Item A, discuss and approve lifting the burn ban. Before we did that, I want to thank you for the rain.
Okay. Well, y'all hit it when you passed the burn ban.
Well, but you brought it up.
Yeah.
We couldn't have done it without you.
So right now, we're about two weeks below where we should, where we need the point where we need to put on burn ban, so, and you know, we're also expected to get a little more rain, and every bit of little rain is going to move that line further and further. So I would recommend that we lift the burn ban and go back to normal until such time as needed.
All right. Do I have a motion to lift the burn ban? Commissioner File made that motion. I have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Martin, DJ on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Burn ban is lifted. Item B, discuss and approve Wilson County Volunteer Fire Department 2021, 2022 Assistance Agreement.
After much discussion over the summer about who the county was, which fire departments the county was going to contract with, it was decided and budgeted, I think, for both Stockdale and Three Oaks. Is that right?
Correct. Only the volunteer...
Yeah, those three.
So Stockdale and...
Three Oaks.
Three Oaks.
They're the three volunteer fire departments left in the county, as far as they're not an ESD. The ESD, some of them are volunteer, but they're not... They're ESDs. And I forgot to put it on last agenda for approval. Normally, we approve the body of this, and then I take them and get them signed. We put it on record with the county clerk after we get them signed. It also includes the mutual aid agreement, which as far as I know, there is no mutual aid agreement with the ESDs, unless they voluntarily want to sign it. And so, but the three volunteer departments, Stockdale, Poe, and Three Oaks, all three are involved in the contract and the mutual aid. Because part of the contract says that you have to enter to a mutual aid agreement with any signatories of this contract. And that also, the contract is also how the county is able to donate money or give money to them, budget money for them, as well as our communication with the Sheriff's Department. That's through this, through the Sheriff's Department, 911 dispatch and all that. So anyway, all I need approval of, and this contract is, the only changes made to the contract from the last several years is the date.
Okay. So it's basically annual renewal?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. They gotta meet these contracts to be able to get their check, is what it amounts to.
All right, do we have any further discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the Volunteer Fire Department 2021, 2022 Assistance Agreement.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, and a second by Commissioner Perdola. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's approved. Thank you, sir. Item 13. Eva S. Martinez, County Clerk, minutes.
Yes, sir. I have handed those out, and the judge has properly reviewed them, and Miss Catherine.
I assume I need sign lists, or...
Yes, as Judge Protean, please. No, it is an action on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Motion, Commissioner Martin, to approve the minutes, so I have a second.
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Perdola. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 14. Kristina Mitz, Intron County Treasurer, Financial Reporter.
Good morning. I've got two for all today. There's the ones to sign. August and September. The layout's still the same, everything. Nothing really changed, obviously, the numbers fluctuated, but there have been questions. I mean, there is... Not actually, I'll tap, just to give you all a heads up with FNC. The last certificate that we had did mature, I believe it was two weeks ago, and so now it's just sitting in a holding. So next in the transport, I'll bring that to attention. It's about 248,000.
I'd like a copy of those from my stuff that you gave me here. I'm going to get your...
Yes, that one's yours right there, the left, that one right there.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir, those, that's your copy, and then those two clipped together, Eva's, for the August and September.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I will hold on to Commissioner Perdola's. Almost in September. So everything is caught up.
Can you tell me why there's a million dollars of all of the money that's going through?
That is pretty much operating every month. That's pretty what's going to be spent.
That's what's moving.
Yes, and it doesn't really happen every month. It's about a month and a half where it kind of over... It does look like that, but it's about a month and a half. Tomorrow, when we get the out-of界的 taxes in the beginning, we'll end up transferring that out. That's pretty much, pretty much our operating, so it's getting late. Yeah, it's 40-ish, 45 days from the time that we look to see that we need a transfer.
So you're pretty much caught up.
Yes, sir.
Praise the Lord. It's been a while since I've seen you.
Everything is complete. I say everything. I'm not going with there's something. But yes, as far as the bank balancing and the funds and everything has completed, a few things that we need to look at, but as far as balancing, everything's caught up.
Good job.
And I know we've had some light discussions on the American Rescue Plan money, and I see...
and I see we made, it's like $41.34 in interest.
It is.
That's interesting.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that we feel safe doing that we can increase our earnings on that money? Besides having an interest-bearing savings account or whatever.
We can look at that. It's just as far as what, I guess, protocol, what we can do with those. I don't know if we're able to do that.
Some counties have deposited into Tech Pool or whoever their money holders are. But for us, because we established the committee and we have some projects that we're considering, if it's in a operating business checking account, then we're able to operate from that checking account. So when I checked into it, it was mixed. Some counties deposited into regular checking, so it just accrues regular interest. Some put it into Tech Pool and their other investment accounts.
Right now, give or take, it is not the one that's better. Or you may say there's not one better than the other. They're fluctuating right now. So don't say any... Tech Pool is gonna be any better at the moment, but that's what we established us. But it will earn, give or take, right now, that amount of money. So you will see that.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports for August and September.
I have a motion for Commissioner Martin to approve both reports from August and September. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Perdola has a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? And it's approved. Item 15. Jalen T. Bofford, Human Resources Specialist, Payroll and Personnel Changes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rodney Wickley resigned from his position as a sergeant patrol deputy for the Sheriff's Department effective October 6. Brooke DeLeon resigned from her position as a patrol deputy with the Sheriff's Department effective October 6. Timothy Hawkes resigned from his position as a corrections officer with the Sheriff's Department effective October 7. And Elizabeth Travette was terminated from her position as a corrections officer with the Sheriff's Department effective October 1.
I have one question. So we moved Andrew to full-time.
Yes.
Did you just... does he need to be included?
No, because that was in on the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is information only? Which takes us to item 16. Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, bills.
You want to win, Shaq? I'll come on.
And if I could get someone to put all of my paperwork from this morning's meeting in my box in the auditor's office, I would thank you very much.
I'll take it to you. This is for an... I'll take it to you, put in your box, Commissioner.
Thank you, ma'am.
This report has a mixture of still remaining 2021 expenses as well as some new ones as well for the new budget. Oh. Sorry. This is the report for the credit cards because it is the beginning of the month. So this is if y'all were interested in seeing that. I don't know if Judge... Let me actually let me have Judge.
Can't speak to the...
Okay.
I'm sure the judge probably will go on. So by the next Commissioner's Court, are we gonna have a pretty good idea, speaking from a Commissioner's standpoint, of how we end it for the full fiscal year?
Yes.
And where we stand in the new fiscal year?
Mm-hmm. Expenses, yeah. So I should have my report completed for the October 24th or whatever the Commissioner's... Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I have a motion for Commissioner Martin to approve the bills. Do I have a second? Commissioner files. It's a second. Any more conversation related to the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? That completes that.
I'd like to say thank you to the court for the beautiful marquee sign at the show warrant. And just so y'all know, there's a... Where the sign, there's a 4H time capsule. I showed Paul, Commissioner, but I don't know if y'all know it. It's about... my son will be 51 when they open it up. I'll be about 98. Are we all still here yet? But just to let y'all know, there's a time capsule in front of the sign.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. We debated that quite a bit back when. But it looks nice.
Yeah, it looked nice.
And it's gonna do a good job, I think, communicating what we wanna communicate there.
Expo Center. The Expo Center.
And we're now to item 17, which is the one I've been looking for since 9 o'clock. We're adjourned.
Good job, Commissioner Polly.
Thank you.